People and is functional. I do not support legislation via referendum. And I'll tell you why. I will tell you why I don't support legislation via referendum. The reality is, is that many of these issues are extremely complex. When you do legislation via referendum, you are forced to set the language in place, six, sometimes eight months in advance of a vote. And inevitably, the nuance of these complex issues does require changes to be made. I'm proud, I'm very proud to have been one of the authors of the paid sick ordinance that passed just a couple of months ago that will help people. And you may not think that's a big deal, but the reality is, it is a big deal. In the last 48 hours, in the last 48 hours before we pass an ordinance.
Also, Councilmember Frye, I'm going to ask if you can just pause for a moment. I'm just going to ask if you pause for a moment, Councilmember Frye. I'm just going to ask your permission, please. If we could just let him, you know, and you will be able to record what he says and all those things, just to allow him to state his reasons and we'll be able to vote.
In the last 48 hours before that legislation was passed a couple of months ago, significant changes were made that allowed an employee to enforce their rights, that gave the employees' rights of appellate appeal, and that literally changed significant parts of the ordinance indisputably for the better. The blunt measure of a referendum does not allow for that. This is not a comment on minimum wage. This is a comment on legislation via referendum which I strongly oppose. Brexit is one example where it didn't work. Prop 8, Prop 8 is another example where it didn't work. When you have legislation via referendum, whether it's via state or via municipality, there are instances where you can have 20 and sometimes 30 different issues on the ballot. This is my job, and I'm accountable based on that job. I work hard to study the different issues. Everybody else they have, people have families to take care of, they've got jobs to do, they're in positions where inevitably, they're not conducting all of the research necessary to pass a functional ordinance. And I believe strongly that while an increased minimum wage is essential to help the workers in our city, I simultaneously believe strongly that a referendum is not the mechanism for doing it. You know, I like Councilmember Glidden, who by the way, has shown great leadership. Like Councilmember Glidden stated, you know, having, having this effort to engage voters, to undergo a petition, it's arduous and it's difficult. And, you know, in the end of the day, it does provide the feedback as well as momentum necessary to ultimately get something passed. That's the reality. For that, you know, you can be proud. Now, it doesn't change my mind on the legislation via referendum piece, and that may upset some of you, but I think, you know, true leadership at times is taking a nuanced position that is hated by both sides. Following this vote, I believe that myself, Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Worsami will have a staff direction that will put into place a mechanism to take the reins and do this the right way. And I'm very confident that we are going to move in the right direction here in the next year. And then finally, regarding the law, you know, this is the case with most law, there are ambiguities, there are gray areas, and I fully appreciate the leverage that is brought by the threat of a lawsuit. And I fully appreciate that. And, you know, I've read, and I have read the law on this, and ultimately, I will not be supporting this legislation via referendum.
Councilmember Kano. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the time to address the community on this very important issue. I naturally, intuitively, and because I was born into the community that is facing the struggle today, will be supporting the charter question to move forward on the ballot. So I will not be able to support your motion today, Councilmember Glidden, and I wanted to talk a little bit about my position on this issue. I come from a community where participatory democracy has proven to strengthen nations, countries, and the standard of living of many people. I come from communities that struggle to pay their bills daily. Today, you know, we see how our community members have been able to mobilize more than 17,000 signatures in support of raising the wage through a measure that directly engages the people of the city to say whether or not they would like their lives to be improved. I believe this is the right thing to do. I believe we need to support our community members to have a say in this particular issue. I am not afraid of a legal lawsuit. I think that it is important for us to have this conversation and to move forward in the process and to not block our residents from having a say in this particular question to raise the wage. It's clear that federally, the minimum wage has not been raised since 2009. Locally, the Minnesota minimum wage is below the federal poverty level for a family of four. I want to repeat that again, because I think that's really important for us to notice, is that the current Minnesota minimum wage, even at its heightened level, is still below the federal poverty level. I want to know how many councilmembers can make a living and can feed their children and send them prepared to school on that wage. More than one in four Minneapolis residents today live in poverty. Those issues are connected to the challenges we see in our communities, in crime and safety and the shootings. These two issues are interrelated, and this is a clear solution for that, for those particular challenges. The Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development recently came out with statistics talking about how an individual, in order to afford basic needs in our city and our region, needs to be making $15.28. The facts are there. The issue is real. What you as a community have done is raised a very important debate, an issue that, to me, is not necessarily radical, but it's needed, it's visionary, and it's not going away. As a woman with three children, coming from a household of a mother who also had three children, I recognize that right now, 27% of the women living in Minneapolis are living in poverty. How dare we not let those women vote on whether or not they want to raise the wage? I believe this is an appropriate question and an appropriate charter amendment issue. I believe it's morally and ethically the right thing to do. I come from a community where, when we started mobilizing for immigrant rights, we learned about the civil rights of this country. And we learned about how, back in the day, the legal opinion was to ensure that African-American people and white people could not share the same drinking fountain. The community mobilized and changed that. I come from a community where the legal opinion of the day was undocumented immigrant students should not attend college at in-state tuition rates. The community mobilized and changed that. Today, the legal opinion says, no, you shouldn't allow this ballot question to move forward. Elected officials need to stand up and say, yes, it is time for us to address this issue. So today, I will be voting against the motion to not allow the Minneapolis voters to have this on the ballot, and I will be standing with you long-term to figure out ways that we can raise the wage. And I know that other councilmembers here today will be put in a difficult situation in their votes, and I want to say that I appreciate their willingness to continue to walk with us in this conversation. I acknowledge that we will not achieve a consensus today. Perhaps consensus sometimes is not good. But I do want to say that I appreciate all the work that the community has done to bring this forward to our attention, to continue to advance the issue of economic justice, and that I will be voting with you today.
So we have some other councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little hesitant to try to speak to this room today, and I would ask that you please listen, as I have listened to so many of you, so as a request I have. I want to speak to my constituents in particular. I have had such a huge number of comments and conversations and emails and phone calls about this issue. I was one of the earliest supporters, along with many of my colleagues, of raising the wage in the city of Minneapolis, and I stand here very strongly in support of raising the wage in the city of Minneapolis. This is a hard vote for me today. To be honest, I could take an easy vote, because I think, you know, as people talk, as we, as we vote, you'll see that my, my vote won't tip the scales in one way or another for the result today. So I could take what would seem like a politically easy vote, to stand with workers, to put this on the ballot, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that for the same reason that I have taken so many hard votes in the past. Thank you. I support raising the wage. I know that many people in this room disagree with me, will be angry with me, and I invite you to call me, I invite you to sit with me and talk about this. I think you are going to see, by the time this meeting is over, that the majority of city council members in the city of Minneapolis either support or are open to raising the wage, and I think that is really important message for us to send today. I also understand, and I have absolutely no critique of the ballot campaign, I understand that workers want wages now, I understand that the feeling of by any means necessary, I have no.
Can we just let her be able to finish her comments?
Thank you, everyone. I am in awe of the organizing that has happened. I think that the, the signatures and the emails and the calls show how strongly people in the city of Minneapolis feel about wages. I ask you to please work with us as we move forward to pass a higher minimum wage in the city of Minneapolis.
Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to support your motion today. I know it's going to be very difficult for the community and organizers, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done, but we are, we do support the majority of the council, including Council Vice President Glidden, who's worked on this for a long time, who's a champion of this issue, and Councilmember Bender, and Councilmember Frye, and Gordon and Kano, we've, you know, we are, it's all about how we get there, and is it a referendum or an ordinance? Do we include all the voices, or do we just say $15 right now, you know, or do we include the small businesses? I have a concern, I have, I have a concern, because I come from a community, I come from a community that drives small business. I come from a community that drives small business. You know, Quirillo Restaurant, Marsha Allah Restaurant, the money transfers, Amel, the Hafshil, the home health cares, the day cares, thousands of colored people work for small businesses. You know, Lake Street, the Latino businesses who've come to my office, who are concerned, who are saying, our voice has not been heard. You know, we're small businesses, I employ 10 people, I employ 15 people. You've just passed a sick and safe time ordinance that we are not even aware of, that we don't even know how to comply to. Now you're going to increase the minimum wage without us being at the table. Now, I'm very supportive of increasing the minimum wage. I grew up in a country that had social welfare, you know, safety nets, the NHS, you know, full healthcare benefits, you know, things that we talk about here in the United States I had growing up in Europe. So I'm very supportive of it, but how do we get there is a different story. How do we get there? And I am going to support our attorney's recommendation, but please give us an opportunity to work with you, to work with everyone, to craft an ordinance. Like I, like I said, you have supporters on the council. We will move forward together, we will work, just like we did on sick pay. You were saying we weren't going to pass it, but we did, and it was actually stronger than people expected, and I believe that we can get something on minimum wage that will benefit workers, that will protect small, minority, and black-owned businesses in the city of Minneapolis. Because we weren't talking about wealth, it's not just about earning $15 minimum wage, it's about developing and training our youth, making sure that they have the skills to earn double minimum wage, double $15 an hour. And, hold on, let me finish, and also protecting, and also protecting small businesses that are immigrant-owned and minority-owned, they also need to be taken into consideration. And that's the challenge that I have, and I, we will move forward, but we will also include their voices in this discussion. Thank you very much, and thank you to Councilmember Vice President Glidden.
So there's one more speaker in queue, there's one more speaker in queue, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this. I just wanted to explain a little bit about my reasoning and why I can't support your motion coming forward. It was kind of interesting, because the clerk was so good, and the attorney has to provide us. We were provided two optional resolutions, and as I read through one, that said we should put it on the ballot, it made complete sense to me. I think a key provision that we needed to look for is, is it sufficient in satisfying the minimum signature requirements and in compliance with requirements as to the form under Minnesota Statute Section 410? And I think that's really what this decision hinges on. I have to say, I enter it with a lot of bias, a lot of bias about the economic disparities in our city, in our country, in our world, a lot of bias of raising questions about capitalism itself, things like that. But this is really about, did the petition, did the petition satisfy the minimum requirements and does comply with a statute for 410.12? So, before I got anybody's opinion on this, I looked up 410.12, and it was pretty clear to me that it's a, it's a fairly broad statute that gives a lot of authority for charter amendments and things to go into, to charters that are there. So it was interesting to read the other opinions as they came in, and I think they, the discussion about, this is just an ordinance, is kind of a distraction, because nobody's asking for an ordinance, this is about a charter amendment. So that's what we have, it, nobody wants this as an ordinance. I'll tell you my personal opinion and to my colleagues here, I think this is better suited for an ordinance. And I've been here a long time, and I've seen us look at ordinance and charter changes and what should go in there and what shouldn't, and I thought rules about loaves of bread really didn't belong in the charter. I questioned why we're having charter provisions about swimming and other issues, and I supported it when we decided to take those out of the charter. And the way we decided to take those provisions out of the charter and move them into ordinances, we went to the voters and said, please, please make these changes, voters, in our charter. And nobody had said those, that minutia, and even the food, you guys must remember this, there we had a liquor food money requirement in order to have a liquor license in certain parts of the city and all those things. So obviously, we'd been allowed for over a century, can't remember when the first charter was, was passed, but definitely over a century, to have those provisions in the charter. So that is kind of a call, what goes in there. And what goes in there, a lot of it has to do with, how much do we want it baked into the government? Do we want to make changing it very hard, or do we want it to be more flexible and easier? And I actually think an ordinance might make a lot more sense for this, it'll be more flexible, it would be easier, we could pass it with seven votes, we could amend it with seven votes, and those kinds of things. And after this goes down here, and we watch what happens with the lawsuit and other actions goes forward, I am an absolute partner in crafting an ordinance using this as a draft model that we can go forward on. So don't get me wrong. I also just want to say that I think people are entering this with the best of intentions, and they're trying really hard to figure out how to do the right thing, whether they're lawyers from the outside, our attorneys in here, the people in this room, all of us, and, and nothing is really personal here. But when I look at who gets to decide on what an ordinance, whether it's an ordinance or not, or whether it feels or looks more like an ordinance or doesn't, I don't know that that's the council's role here. We need to make sure that it legally could be put in the charter, and I believe it can, and we also need to be able to make sure it had the kind of signatures to go on there. And then I think what's appropriate for us to do is say, let's have the debate with the voters about whether this should be in the charter or not, and let the voters of the city decide. And if I was part of that, I'd say it absolutely could go in the charter. When I read, we talk about what should go in the charter, and it's things that relate to the establishment administration or regulation of city government. Well, obviously, what we're doing here is we're adding another regulation to our city government. It also talks about, well, the conclusion of the attorney that we got talked about how this is legislative in nature. So I was curious about, what do we consider legislative documents in city government? So I Googled it, I Googled other cities and everything, and when I look up legislative documents, the first one for almost every city that has one is a charter. So we're talking about a legislative thing, obviously, it's our charter. And then, there's another concern in setting a minimum wage for all individuals in the city, is establishing a detailed, establishing a detailed scheme of enforcement doesn't necessarily fit under 410. But 410 actually, interestingly enough, and somewhat to my relief, as somebody who wanted to see this might fit into the charter, calls out that we can put any scheme of municipal government in, in the charter, and it even uses the word scheme, and I thought that was, it also uses, I think, framework of governance, and it talks about that. And so I was curious about what is a scheme, and how do we define it? I actually looked it up, and a scheme is a large-scale systematic plan or arrangement for, this is, I'm not sure which dictionary this is, you can find your own, this might be Merin Webster, but a large-scale systematic plan or arrangement for attaining one particular object or putting a particular idea into effect. When I looked at the ballot proposal, the charter amendment, this is a large-scale systematic plan for setting a minimum wage in the city of Minneapolis and putting that idea into effect. And that's what, we have a lot of those in our charter. And now, some of us in good governments would like our charter to be more about the framework and talk about the powers and all of that, but this also is, we're adding a new power to the city council to set a minimum wage, and would be important. So, I couldn't, I can't wrap my head around the idea that this isn't an appropriate thing to put on the ballot, because it fits 410. Also, I, as my brother, just kidding, I mean, my brother in the big sense. Also, though, it's tough, because we have such differing legal opinions that are coming at us right now, that it might not even be, it might be overstepping the role, I mean, we often talk about, we have legislative decisions, quasi-judicial decisions, judicial decisions, and we're kind of acting like a judge in this matter. But quite seriously, whatever happens today, potentially, if we, if we put this, if we voted to allow it on, on the charter, or we didn't, there'd probably be some legal action about it. And I'm just more comfortable saying, all right, I've tried to interpret it the best that I can, I see that 410 says we can put schemes of, of governance into our charter, this is obviously a scheme, it has the sufficient number of signatures, my job right now is to err on the side of fairness and democracy and say, put it out there. Then if it's meant to, it can go forward to a judge, where we can have the attorney spend hours and hours, you know, putting in their briefs and having testimony, and it can go to another level if it seems like it needs to be that format review. So thanks for giving me this much time. I had a couple more notes, but I think I'll let it go there.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson has asked to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think one of the things I have the luxury of up here is seeing the staff direction that I know some colleagues will be putting forward after this vote, and I would ask that folks stick around and actually hear about that staff direction, I think it's pretty powerful, and I don't want to let the cat out of the bag on that, but I think, as was mentioned, it's very supportive of increasing the minimum wage. When it comes to this issue, it's not an easy issue. I personally would prefer to actually see this on the ballot, I think for a number of reasons, including the fact that I think, when you look at the state legislature, the state legislature is, to me, less likely to preempt any sort of action by the council or by the citizens versus the council. So I'm torn on this issue, and obviously, I'm not a lawyer, but I had an opportunity to go over both sides very, very closely on this. What strikes me is around what is actually within the charter. And if you look at that document, it is about the structure and the organization of the city. You can go out and look at the League of Minnesota Cities, what their best practices are for charters, and it is about how the city as an enterprise, as an organization, functions. And to me, the issue of minimum wage isn't, is a business regulation, it is ordinance, it is something that the council needs to work on. And so that is why today I will be voting to support the motion. And I want to, and I want to remind everybody here, and I want to remind everyone here, that if you think that your time organizing was wasted because this is, the motion is going to pass today, you are profoundly mistaken, because this staff direction would not have happened if not for all this work. And, and I also feel that if I were to vote yes today, well, I would, I'm sure get applause and pats on the back, and it would be politically easy to vote yes today, I would be voting, I believe, voting to waste the time and the money of this organization.
Let him finish, please.
In a futile court fight, because it would not stand up under reasonable interpretation. And so if anybody has doubts about that, I would ask you to go personally look at our city charter, and go look at documents out there on what a city charter is, how it is framed, and then make your decision off of that. But I've looked at it, and that is my decision today, and I will support this staff direction as well, and I hope you all take the time to read it and understand that this is the moment that minimum wage is being teed up in this city per ordinance.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anyone else who has asked to speak, I'm just looking because, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to respond to the narrative of this vote being politically easy. I don't think this is politically easy for anybody. And I think it's really important to acknowledge that we are all making our decisions based on our assessment of reading the legal opinions that have been put out from both the advocate groups, the groups who want to raise the wage, from our own city attorney. It is not politically easy to, to vote against your own city attorney. It is not politically easy to always be in the minority on this council. It is not politically easy to have city pages write racist articles about you, because you're not willing to back down on issues of racial equity. I know it's not politically easy for you who want, you want to see a raise in the wage, and you're going to have to take a stance against the thousands of people who wage, and you're going to have to take a stance against the thousands of people who want to see this on the charter. I just, I don't find that frame constructive. I don't find that frame to really identify the issues that we're working on here. I just want to make sure that people don't frame this as, oh, you're just trying to be popular and voting with the community. I am here to vote for what I believe is right, for what my residents voted to stand up for. So I just want to acknowledge that this is complex for everybody here. I want to acknowledge that everyone has a constituency to report to, and the voters will hold us accountable for these votes long-term. And I don't want to minimize this into a popularity contest. That's not what this is about. This is about addressing some of the deepest wealth inequities and racial inequities in our city. And I don't, I don't want us as policymakers to walk away from this vote thinking that that's what this was about, a popularity contest. This, for me, is a way to directly help the women, children, and people of color in this community in the most direct way, in the most direct way. And as I alluded to in my speech earlier, this is where we, as policymakers, differentiate ourselves from lawyers. We respond to the people, not to the policies that might be outdated in our law books.
All right.
And I just want to double check because I apologize, I didn't see Councilmember Conno before. Anyone else who wanted to speak? I'm not seeing anyone else who has asked to speak. So I think the clerk will call the roll on this, on the motion that I made.
Councilmember Gordon.
No.
Councilmember Conno.
No.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Charrick Liddon.
Aye.
There are ten ayes and two nays.
Thank you.
Yeah. Both of us wasted, both of us wasted, both of us wasted, both of us wasted. Both of us wasted, both of us wasted, both of us wasted, both of us wasted, both of us wasted.
So I'm going to call on Councilmember Frye. I'm going to call on Councilmember Frye, who has a staff direction he would like to
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is a staff direction brought by myself, Councilmember Worsami, and Councilmember Bender. And I'll just read it through. Councilmembers Frye, Worsami, and Bender direct the Office of the City Coordinator to work with stakeholders, review policies from other cities, review and incorporate results from the forthcoming minimum wage study, and recommend a minimum wage policy to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole by the second quarter of 2017. And two, to formulate a plan for engagement to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole on or before October 5th, 2016.
Okay. So Councilmember Frye, did you want to speak to that, or there are other speakers in queue? Okay, all right, so get in queue whenever you would like. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say that I'm glad that Councilmembers Frye and Worsami and I could come together today with some pretty quick turnaround to bring this forward. I understand that this isn't something that is agreed upon by some of the folks who worked on the ballot, and I absolutely understand that. I understand that. As an author of the paid sick leave policy that passed unanimously last year, as an author of the fair scheduling ordinance that was returned to author with only Councilmembers Liddon, Gordon, and I standing in support of fair scheduling last year, my commitment to this is real. And I hope that after we, today, we can find a way to all work together to raise the wage in the city of Minneapolis. This is a real commitment from me. I am stepping up to say that I am willing to lead, as I did on paid sick time, to help pass a minimum wage next year in the city of Minneapolis.
There are some more, there are some more speakers in, there are some more speakers in queue. Councilmember Conno.
Madam. Madam Chair, I would like to make an amendment to this staff directive that has been presented to us. So I passed around earlier a, an amended version of the Frye, Worsami, Bender staff direction. So the, the new version would read, work with stakeholders, review policies from other cities, review and incorporate results from the forthcoming minimum wage study, and recommend a minimum wage policy, and this is the addition, prioritizing achieving a $15 per hour minimum wage for businesses above 500 employees by the year 2020, to bring before the City Council Committee of the Whole by, and this is the second change, February 1st, 2017. And then the second point in their staff direction would stay the same, which reads, formulate a plan for engagement to bring before City Council Committee of the Whole on or before October 5th, 2016.
And, okay, so Councilmember Conno has made that amendment. I'm not seeing any other speakers on the amendment, so on approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm not sure I heard that, so.
Can we please do roll call on that?
We can do a roll call.
Madam Chair.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich. Bender.
Aye.
Andrew Johnson.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Quincy.
Nay.
Worsami.
No.
Goodman is absent. Frye.
No.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
Charrick Liddon.
Aye.
There are six ayes and six nays.
All right. So we move back to, for now, to the original. So I'm going to ask the, either the clerk or the city attorney to explain what happened. So Councilmember Conno made the motion, and why don't you go ahead and explain?
So the motion that was made to amend, the main motion brought forward by Councilmember Conno, was taken by a roll call vote. The roll resulted in six ayes and six nays. That's a tie vote, and in the absence of a definitive majority vote, a tie vote falls to the floor. We're back to the original main motion.
So we go back to the speaker list on the original motion. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilman President Liddon. You know, I'm very supportive of the motion, and I'm one of the authors with Councilmember Frye and Bender. And the, no.
So.
I think people are, if I may, if I may speak, I think people are misunderstanding something. What we voted on right now was an amendment to the motion. It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was an amendment that was just made. We, I haven't read it as an author of the original. No, this, no, what I mean.
Okay, so let, let Councilmember Worsami.
I also enjoy political theater, but let me, let me finish this. What we have here, what we have here is a motion that I support and the author support. There was an amendment to the motion that changed specific dates and changed, added certain things. The original motion, the reason why I'm supporting the original motion that we crafted together, and I'm not supporting the new motion is, it allows us.
So I'm asking for just permission to allow him to finish his statement, so.
The motion that we have in front of us allows us to have a clear discussion, to bring in all parties, including, you know, the, the community that's, that's organizing the 15 now, also bringing the other voices, coming together, and crafting an ordinance the same way as we did with the sick and safe time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's why, that's why I'm, that's why I'm supporting this motion, and I did not support the previous amendment. Now, now, if we're talking about, again, again, we are try, I mean, it's all about the process. I believe this process, I believe bringing people together, bringing the small businesses, bringing the activists together, and crafting an ordinance will support, will support, will support. Yes, ma'am.
Please.
And I'm from the poorest community in the state, ma'am. So let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not have back and forth. Like I said, I support this motion, and I would like my colleagues to support it.
Ma'am, and other speakers, can, can we please let, I do understand that emotions are high in the room, but I just want to allow the speakers to, on the council, to be able to give their reasoning, which is their transparency to the public on, on their statement and.
And I would like to finish by saying, I would, I would respect, I would like my colleagues to support this motion that we brought forth. It gives us an opportunity to raise the minimum wage, and it also gives us an opportunity to hear other voices that are not here right now. Just like the activists here are saying that they want to hear their voices heard, there are countless thousands of people in the city of Minneapolis who have not, who have not participated in the process, who also deserve their voices to be heard. And I think, I think, I think we should accord them, I think we should accord them the same respect that we want for ourselves. And that's all this motion does. We, yeah, thank you very much.
So we have, we have two other council members who have asked to speak. Councilmember Gordon.
So I, I don't know how I can't vote against the staff direction because obviously it's moving the ball, you know, if football metaphor works, whatever, it's, it's a, it's a tiny step forward. I appreciate that. I'm concerned about the timing of this. This is the exact kind of staff direction I might expect would have come forward with, when the report comes in in September, or maybe when we're doing a, when we refer a subject matter introduction to a committee, then they'll direct staff to work on it. So this seems like it's premature. I think what it can do, and obviously what it's intended to do, is to show the public that, well, we, we don't, we want to try to do something, and we couldn't obviously cobble together the votes to, to, to let the charter amendment make it onto the ballot, but we think we can get the votes to at least say that staff's going to legitimately take this up and start studying it more seriously. It's a very good possibility, and this is all about inside strategy, that if we didn't do it now, it might not have the votes, because now it just is a pinch point here from what's happened today. So I'm going to support it, but I couldn't support it without kind of shining that light on it and doing some of my old man grumbling about it as I vote yes.
Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things here for, for the community members and other council members who might be, might have listened to Councilmember Worsami's comments. I just want to say that the finalized version of the staff direction was shared with me this morning as I sat down in this chair at about 10:00 AM, quickly assessed it, had been thinking about an amendment, and had I been given the final version of the staff direction two, three, four days ago, I could have talked to other folks about the changes that I was hoping to make to this. I quickly emailed everybody this morning and handed out copies at the beginning of the meeting on the changes that I would propose. And so just to be clear, what was voted on, on what I would consider a tie, a six-to-six tie, and thank you to all the council members who did vote in support of this amendment, was being clear and intentional about reaching a $15 per hour minimum wage for businesses above 500. For, for businesses above 500 employees by the year 2020, which is the language that was presented to us in the charter amendment that the community is here to support today. So this does not drastically change anything in the staff direction outside of being more clear and intentional about how we're hoping to raise the wage. And this particular language reflects a national trend where more than 30 cities have already raised their wage nationally above the federal minimum wage, and more than 12 cities have already raised the wage at $15 an hour nationally. So I just wanted to clarify for the public what was happening, and specifically because I take it a little personal when somebody says that, you know, they haven't been able to read something, because that's what happens to me all the time. People throw things at me at the last minute, hoping that they'll be able to pass their issues through. And, and what I did was respond to something that was presented to me at 10:00 AM this morning with the best intention to continue to raise the wage and ensure that council members could take a stand to support the working families of this community. So again, thank you to the six council members who voted in support. I will not be able to support the, the original staff direction as presented.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted a couple minutes to explain my votes in the vote that I'm about to take. I supported Councilmember Conno's amendment to this motion because I do believe that's more consistent with the way other cities have started by looking at 500 employees and above. And I appreciate that there is urgency around addressing income inequality. And yes, every hard-working employee deserves a living wage. We don't have this research yet, so to me, going forward with this kind of a staff direction saying, give us the research back and then give us, you know, a, a policy to move forward with it, is really preemptive. We don't know if that research is going to come back and say that we need to have a bigger, we need to get more people with us, more of a county size, or more of two cities with us to start down this path. I, I hear the call for a higher minimum wage, and I believe the gentleman who spoke about our city not being able to make this $15 an hour for our own employees is a very real thing. More than one in four people in Minneapolis live in poverty. I appreciate that Councilmember Conno said that. And, and you need more money, and you also need the cost of living to stay the same. There's a lot of externalities here. That's why I will work hard with you on things we can do to start this in a way that's balanced, on a path where small businesses can still offer employment, where hours aren't going to get cut, and where young people can still learn job skills. I'm interested in starting down this path. Last year, Hennepin County took on $15 an hour minimum wage for all the county employees. We haven't yet done that, so maybe we need to look at what that would take to start it here and with ourselves. It might be because it would greatly diminish some of our programs, like Step Up, for one. There are a lot of Minneapolis small businesses that do that kind of thing today, too, for us. I've asked our Director of Economic Policy and Development several months ago, when Shakopee started down that path, of saying that any time there is a government incentive to locate their business there in Shakopee, that they need to pay those employees higher than the minimum wage, and that has worked out very well for the economics of Shakopee. Those have had great results, and I don't know why we're not looking at that kind of thing here. So I can't support the staff direction as written today because I feel it's preemptive, but I do commit to continue working on it. Thank you.
I believe Councilmember Johnson had raised his red tag, and then Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, just to kind of respond to what was said about that, I think that we do have space right now to have staff review policies from other cities reviewed, and as the results are coming in on the minimum wage study, to be able to review that, incorporate that, and to start working on the actual outreach and engagement of all the different stakeholders on this issue. So this is a staff direction that I can support. We'll just recall that I know with paid sick leave, something I'd supported from the very start, there were a lot of people that looked at the partnership that was created and said, oh, this is just a reason or a way to kill this issue of paid sick leave. They're very upset about that. And at the time, had paid sick leave come up for a vote, it would have failed, and then we'd have closed the door on it. Instead, we created a partnership, we created a process around it, we brought stakeholders together, and it passed unanimously. Not only did it pass unanimously and benefit Minneapolis workers, it heated up for cities across the state to work on this issue. And now we have St. Paul working on it. I believe there are initiatives in Duluth, in Bloomington, I believe there are folks interested in St. Louis Park, and in cities across our state. And I think one of the reasons why they're looking at it is because it passed unanimously, because we were able to do it here in Minneapolis. And one of the things that I've learned in my time as And one of the things that I've learned in my time as